I'd like to call the order of the August 22, 2016 legislative session. I'd like to announce if there's emergency should arise during the meeting, please exit the room, make a right-hand turn, go down the stairs. If that exit for some reason is blocked, go out, make a left-hand turn, and then a right-hand turn and down the stairs. And should you need any help, please let us know and we'll get you some assistance. We also ask that you would silence all electronic devices, and if you need to take a phone call, please exit the room. At this time, I would like to invite the very Reverend Frida Malcolm, rector at St. Albans Episcopal Church, to the podium for our invocation.
Almighty God, visit, we pray, the cities of the earth, renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life, enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression, that peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order, and that men and women from different cultures and with different talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity. Send down upon those who hold office in the city of Salisbury the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. In this we pray in your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Malcolm. Everyone, please stand and join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now have a presentation, and I invite Christine Chestnut, from Safe Streets in the City of Salisbury Coordinator, to give us some input on National Night Out. Welcome, Christine.
Thank you. Thanks for inviting me to come talk about National Night Out. This has become, this has been my responsibility since 2013, so this was my fourth year doing it. We've had some incredible turnout, some incredible support from our community, which is great. This is the 33rd year for National Night Out nationwide. It's now held actually worldwide. Many military bases also hold National Night Out in conjunction with over 16,000 communities across the country this year. This was the sixth year that we've held it in the city park. We changed it prior to my coming here because we needed an environment that was welcoming to everyone in the neighborhood, or everyone in the community, I mean. So National Night Out is intended to be held in every single neighborhood. The police department would not do that, that would be the neighborhood's responsibility. But because we haven't had people that are willing to do that as of yet, we are holding it, and so we're just holding it in a place that's welcoming for everyone. This was the most diverse year that we've had as far as attendees since I've been here, for sure. Many, many cultures of people came this year, which was fantastic to see. If you saw the pictures in the Salisbury Independent, one of those pictures captured that diversity, it was great. Every year we participate in awards, and what that looks like is I have to submit pictures, media, all of the things leading up to National Night Out, and including National Night Out, in a binder. I submit that to the National Association of Town Watch. We have won an award every year since 2012, which was the first year we competed, and then every year that I've been here, we've gotten an award. The award categories are based on population of the city, so we are in a 15,000 to 40,000 population, that's the category that we fall in. I'm trying to get us to the top of that category. And I haven't done it yet because I've kind of been just trying to get everything of my regular job caught back up, but all the participants and the donors receive a certificate from us as a certificate of appreciation. That will be coming out in the next week or two. They'll have those printed, make sure that everyone gets one of those. We do that every year. This just kind of shows since I started in 2013, which I started in March and didn't even know what National Night Out was, so pulling it off in August was impressive, actually. But how we've grown in attendance, how many bikes we've given away, that's increased tremendously because of 2015, the churches that stepped up, of course, the hot dogs are incredible. And the vendors, we started out with 38 vendors the first year that I did it, and this year we had 64, and actually that number I now realize has increased because people showed up that I didn't know were there. So that is last minute kind of decided to come, so that's increased. One of the things that I've done is to, I have a budget of zero, I have to fundraise all the money and fundraise everything that happens at night, so I have no money for advertising, so I've tried to use free resources. In 2013, I, those were just the three things that I knew to do. As before, guess what, in 2016, I think the biggest difference this year was I created a Facebook event page specifically for our event, which allowed me to share it with all of my friends, and then my friends shared it with their friends, and it got the word out there. I think that's why we had such an increase in attendance. This is just one of the pictures. I was able to secure a drone camera. I've never had video for National Night Out yet until this year, and if I'm going to move us up in that award category, I have to have video. So Brian Whitman, who's a former police officer here in the Salisbury, in the City of Salisbury, has a drone camera, he brought it out, that was one of the pictures he took. That was just another picture of just how many people were actually there, that's just one small portion of the park. We estimate about 1,500 people attended this year. That's a best, that's a best guess. We don't really have a way to keep track of, you know, there's no way to really control who comes and who doesn't, but in this, this won't come up, I just tried, but there's a YouTube video that I can send via email to everyone of video from the night. It was, I was going to click this picture and it was going to come up, but it doesn't do that on this PowerPoint. So that's just, just another picture that I thought was kind of a nice picture to capture the police officers with the children getting tickets to win prizes, and the two that you see in the dark color, they are currently in our police academy, so they will be police officers, they're our recruits. These are the churches that donated, the 43 bicycles that we gave away this year. Some same churches as last year, some different churches than last year. That's a tremendous thing, the kids all love to go home with a bike. If I could give every kid a bike, of course I would, but Emmanuel Wesleyan, two years in a row, has donated 30 bicycles, which is incredible. I asked each church in the city to give us $50 for one bike. Some churches gave one, some churches gave none, some churches gave six, and then Emmanuel Wesleyan gave 30. So it was just incredible support that we have. I couldn't do that without them. This is just a list of the people that participated. Again, as I was going through things today, looking at photos, there's more people than this list even has because I, people that came last minute that I didn't even realize were there. This is a list of all the people that donated in one way or another. They donated either goods, or money, or bikes, or whatever. Without them, I couldn't do it again. I start out with a budget of zero, I have to fundraise all of it, and this year, about counting the bicycles, it was about $4,000 that I had to raise to pay for everything. So it's increased from my first year, I think we raised about $1,700. So this year it was about 4,000, what it cost to pull that event off. And this is just special thanks to all of the people who were so gracious to help me and provide things for me, and that always show up every year and just kind of give us the support. Different photographers this year that I had that I've never had before, different police departments. Delmar Police Department joined us this year, that was new. They've asked me this year to help them create their own National Night Out for next year. So I'm going to be meeting with Kevin McHale Hill and another one of their officers and getting their ball rolling for, so they can have it in Delmar next year. Of course, the Sheriff's Department, the State Police, they always come. Public Works makes the park look beautiful before we get there, and just all of the support from the City of Salisbury. Does anybody have any questions? That's kind of the end of my... You do? Do you have a question? Okay.
Can I join you?
Yes.
Well, I want to say for a moment, just take a moment, to say, this is all pretty incredible. And what people may not realize is that Christine also, as the Safe Streets Coordinator, is constantly analyzing, producing information about, and working on the challenges in our Safe Streets area. If you're not familiar with that, it's larger than the City of Salisbury. So it's an area that includes territory to the north, to the northeast, northwest, southeast and southwest of the city. It's, you know, all of the donut holes, you know, in the city boundaries, and tracks adult and juvenile arrests, tracks crime and calls for service in those areas, and really keeps us all informed as to what's happening. And every week, every Monday, I think, right? Every Monday, she sends an analysis of what's happening in the Safe Streets area out to many of us, so we have a sense of what's going on, and so that people can make decisions to start to improve that condition. So it's not like this is the only thing you had going on. You're busy.
This is a very small portion of my job that takes up a very large portion of my time.
Well, and we're very grateful.
It's great, though. It's, I think it's the best part of my job, actually.
I believe that. I mean, I'm seeing face painting, I'm seeing tents, and, you know, one thing I'd request is that every single year since I joined the city council, I've been away at training when National Night Out has happened, so if there's any way you can work on, you know, either changing my schedule or coordinating National Night Out.
I'd have a better way of treating you.
Maybe call my commander and get that changed. And then lastly, I have another question. There were 1,500 attendees, but 1,400 hot dogs sold, or eaten.
Yeah.
What happened to the other 100 people?
No.
What's wrong with them?
Not everybody.
Not everybody eats hot dogs.
Not everybody, yeah.
Okay.
Because I had, I started out with 1,300 hot dogs, one ball, 300 more.
I'd eat two. Jack would eat two. Christine, we appreciate everything that you do, and I want to just read this if I can. This is a certificate to represent our appreciation for your distinguished service and invaluable contributions as coordinator of the Salisbury Police Department's Annual National Night Out, held on August 2, 2016, at the Salisbury City Park, to promote and celebrate the spirit of community necessary between law enforcement personnel and the citizens they protect to ensure that all in our city may thrive. This certificate is issued in recognition thereof by the mayor on behalf of the citizens of the City of Salisbury. Congratulations and thank you for all you do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Christine. We appreciate all you do.
Yes, and you are very hardworking, Christine, and I've seen you work myself.
Thank you.
And I want you to send me an email when the next meeting is, because you know I'm behind, and I've always attended, so I would like to continue to...
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Irtin, Ms. Jackson. All those in favor of the legislative agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Irtin.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Nichols, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you. How are you?
Good.
On the consent agenda this evening, we have the August 1, 2016 special meeting minutes, the August 1, 2016 work session minutes, the August 8, 2016 council meeting minutes, resolution number 2654 approving the appointment of Barry Dressel to the Historic District Commission for term ending August 2019, and resolution number 2655 approving the reappointment of Bradley T. Phillips to the Historic District Commission for term ending August 2019, and approving a manufacturing exemption request for Poly One Design Structures and Solutions LLC for their equipment purchased in 2015. And that would be it for the consent agenda.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Nichols.
Mr. Graylin?
Yes.
Could we just thank Mr. Phillips and Mr. Dressel for their service?
Yes. Mr. Phillips, Mr. Dressel, if you're here, please stand. Thank you very much. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the award of bids.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Irtin, Ms. Jackson. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. This is the award of bid for contract 121-16 Paleo Water Treatment Plant Well Number Two Rehabilitation. City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Department of Public Works to solicit bids for contract 121-16 Paleo Water Treatment Plant Well Number Two Rehabilitation. The scope of work for this bid solicitation will furnish all of the labor materials and equipment necessary for the rehabilitation and performance testing of Paleo Well Number Two, the installation and testing of one new submersible pump, and providing a backup pump. The procurement division followed standard bid practices by advertising in Daily Times on the City of Salisbury's website, utilizing the city's vendor list, and advertising on the state of Maryland website, eMaryland Marketplace. One vendor submitted a bid by the due date and time of Thursday, July 7, 2016, at 2:30 p.m. The bid response was determined to be responsive and responsible, and funding is available on the project account noted in the packet. The procurement division concurs with the recommendation submitted by Public Works and thereby requests council's approval to award 121-16 Paleo Water Treatment Plant Well Number Two Rehabilitation to A.C. Schulte of Delaware in the amount of $111,835.
I'm just looking, did you mention, you did mention that there's also a backup?
A backup, backup pump, yeah.
Do I see that?
It is... I don't know if Mike Maltz had included it in any of the council agenda, but the...
Where is it? On the breakdown?
I've got it on the breakdown here, if you want to see it, Jack.
It's in the...
Oh, I see it.
The very last line item.
I got it, I got it. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll call the motion for the award of bid. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution 2650.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Irtin. Mr. Boda, do you have a...
Please.
I'm good.
You good? Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Council President, members of the council. Resolution 2650 proposes the annexation of land situated at the northeast corner of Route 13 in Daggsboro Road, more specifically with the braces again, 30248 Daggsboro Road, parcel number 184, map number 20, grid number 24. The annexation shall be known as the PennTex Daggsboro Road Annexation. The annexation plan calls for an 18,750 square foot grocery store. The overall net positive fiscal impact of it is estimated to be $12,300 annually. Your packet includes the petition for annexation, which is dated March 31, 2016, the certification of signatures from the city surveyor, the fiscal impact, fiscal impact estimates, the staff report from the planning commission meeting, the planning commission's report for a favorable recommendation, exhibit A, which are the meets and bounds, exhibit B, the annexation plan, exhibit C, the annexation agreement. This annexation will add 2.51 acres of land to the city of Salisbury. The zoning classification shall be commercial. This resolution shall take place 45 days following the final passage and is subject to a referendum. And of course, resolution 2651 will establish a public hearing, but we'll get to that next.
Can I make a motion to amend the resolution on line 20 by striking the words Ann Westerly?
All right, we have a motion to amend, striking Ann Westerly on line 20. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Irtin. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Any questions on the resolution? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of resolution 2650, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Mr. Stevenson?
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 2651.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
Thank you. Resolution 2651 establishes the date for a public hearing for the previous resolution, that being the PennTex Daggsboro Road Annexation. The hearing is scheduled to be held on Monday, September 26, at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers at the government office building.
Questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of resolution 2651, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. I'll now, now we have an ordinance. I'll entertain a motion for ordinance number 2400 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
And I'd like to, at this time, open the public hearing. Do we have anybody that would like to speak on behalf or against? Please stand and be sworn in. All right, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. You're up, please. Thank you.
Hi, Peter Goldblatt in for Mark Tillman. This is second reading, ordinance number 2400, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, pursuant to chapter 17.228 of title 17, zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code in section 4.04 of Article 66B of the Annotated Code of Maryland for the purpose of amending section 17.216.080 wall signage permitted in office and service residential district. Whereas the ongoing application, administration, and enforcement of Title 17 zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates a need for periodic review, evaluation, and amendments that will keep Title 17 current. And whereas the mayor and city council may amend Title 17 zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code pursuant to the authority granted by Article 66B of the Maryland Annotated Code and in accordance with specific provisions of chapter 17.228, amendments and rezoning of Title 17 zoning. And whereas the mayor and city council requested that the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission periodically review Title 17 in light of existing procedural practices and input from the city council and members of the public. And whereas the Wycomico Presbyterian Church submitted an application to amend the text of section 17.216.080 regarding wall signage permitted for churches in the office and service residential district. And whereas a public hearing on the proposed amendments was held by the planning commission in accordance with the provisions of chapter 17.228 of Title 17 zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code on May 19, 2016. And whereas the planning commission did recommend approval of the proposed text amendment to section 17.216.080. Now therefore being enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, a Title 17 zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code is hereby amended as follows. Amend section 17.216.080 by adding item D as follows. One square foot of wall signage per linear foot of building width up to a maximum of 30 square feet of non-illuminated or indirectly illuminated signage for churches or church social or reception halls for church-related buildings.
Okay. We neglected to get a motion on that.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Irtin made the motion, Mr. Boda seconded. Any discussion about the ordinance? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of ordinance number 2400 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2397 for the second reading.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson?
Second.
Mr. Irtin?
Thank you. Second reading, ordinance number 2397, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury amending sections 8.11.020 of chapter 8.11, the fire prevention code, 15.04.010 of chapter 15.04 building code, 15.12.020 of chapter 15.12 electrical standards, 15.24.040 of chapter 15.24 housing standards. Whereas the ongoing application, administration, enforcement of Title 8 health and safety in Title 15 buildings and construction of the Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates a need for its periodic review, evaluation, and amendment to keep them current. And whereas the mayor and city council may amend chapter 15.04 building code pursuant to the authority granted SC 2-15 of the Salisbury City Charter and section 20, or, excuse me, section 15-501 at SEEC of the Public Safety Article, Maryland Annotated Code and related COMAR regulations. And whereas the mayor and city council have requested that the Department of Building Permits and Inspections periodically review the code in light of existing building trends and practices and code updates. And whereas the Department of Building Permits and Inspections does recommend approval of proposed code changes. Now therefore being enacted and ordained by the council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland in sections 8.11.020 of chapter 8.11, the fire prevention code, 15.04.010 and 15.04.020 of chapter 15.04 building code, 15.12.020 of chapter 15.12 electrical standards, 15.24.040 of chapter 15.24 housing standards be amended as follows. The amendments are chapter 8.11, the fire prevention code under section 8.11.020, amendments to the state fire prevention code in subsections A and B. 2009 in sections A and B is being replaced with the 2015 addition in each subsection. Under C, the International Building Code, the same change, 2009 is being replaced with the 2015 addition. Under chapter 15.04 building code, under 15.04.010 adoption of standard codes, subsections A, B, C, D, E, F, and G are the same. H is being added, and that is the Maryland Accessibility Code. Under chapter 15.12 electrical standards, 15.12.02, the National Electric Code 2014 addition is being adopted. Under 15, chapter 15.24 housing standards, section 15.24.040A, 1 through 7 stay the same. Subsection, new items 8 and 9 are being added. 8 is the Maryland Accessibility Code, and 9 is the National Electric Code 2014 addition. Everything else has remained the same.
Okay. And we've cleaned up taking the, all the strikes that were in the first one, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any question? Any other questions?
We've got to do that.
Well, there's a, those strikes are still showing 15.12.020. Were those...
That'll be cleaned up, I would assume.
Yes, we'll clean that up.
Any other questions? All right, then I'll call the vote. All those in favor of ordinance number 2397 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2398 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
You can't, they're moving them. Okay. Mr. Boda, we'll give that to Mr. Boda and Ms. Jackson, second. I've never seen what somebody try to make a motion and second. That's all right.
We're on the ball.
He's ready to go.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Second reading, ordinance number 2398, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the fiscal year budget to appropriate funds for traffic equipment repairs and maintenance. Whereas as a result of work performed by the Wycomico County Board of Education at the entrance to Parkside High School, improvements were required at the City of Salisbury-owned traffic signal on Beiglin Park Drive. And whereas the City of Salisbury Traffic Division of the Public Works Department made the necessary repairs to the traffic signal. And whereas the Wycomico County Board of Education reimbursed the city for actual expenses. And whereas the traffic division budget should be increased to accommodate these efforts. Now therefore being ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year 2017 budget and traffic division equipment budget be and are hereby amended as follows. Number one, increase to miscellaneous revenue, account 01000-456911, account by $5,139. Two, increase to traffic equipment, account... dollars. Two, increase to traffic equipment, account number 22000-534302, budget by five thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Any question on the motion? If not, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of approval of ordinance number 2398 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2399 for the second reading.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Irtin, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. Amendment ordinance, uh, second reading, amendment ordinance number 2399, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury, Maryland to abandon an area of land being a portion of an unnamed twenty-foot wide alley accessed from west, accessed from West Market Street and traversing City Parking Lot 11. Whereas the unnamed alley is shown on the platentitled Map of Property of the Salisbury Realty Company dated February 28th, 1920, and recorded among the land records of Wycomico County, Maryland, and platte cabinet 117 Folio 999, is incorporated into the layout of City Parking Lot 11. And whereas the portion of the unnamed alley to be abandoned is adjoined by city-owned parcels 1074, 1075, 1076, 1077, 1078, and 1079, that along with the unnamed alley make up the developed area of City Parking Lot 11. And whereas the city of Salisbury Department of Public Works has determined that the abandonment of a portion of the unnamed alley is in the best interest of the city in order to improve the potential of Lot 11 for development. Whereas the Salisbury Charter SC 11-2 gives the city of Salisbury charge of all public ways in the city of Salisbury. And whereas the Salisbury Charter SC 16-8 allows the city of Salisbury to abandon or otherwise dispose of property that is not saleable. And whereas the city of Salisbury Department of Public Works has prepared and the city solicitor has reviewed the platte to abandon the unnamed alley and revert the twenty-foot width of the portions of the unnamed alley fronting on parcels 1075 and 1074 to these city-owned parcels, a copy of which is attached here to as Exhibit A. And whereas the director of Public Works provided the city council a recommendation of the proposed road abandonment at the July 18th, 2016 city council work session. Now therefore being ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city of Salisbury hereby abandons the four thousand, one hundred and thirty-five point two square foot area of the heretofore described unnamed alley, and that the mayor of the city of Salisbury is hereby authorized to execute all documents necessary to convey the said area with their aforementioned city-owned parcels.
Any questions? If not, here, I will call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2399 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have, uh, had a, we had a notice for closed meeting, uh, and I'm gonna ask legal counsel now for, does it meet the criteria for...
Uh, the, the notice that I saw was, uh, pursuant to Section 10-508, uh, state government article. Um, Section 7 was to consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter. Uh, that would squarely be allowed as a closed session item. And my knowledge of what's gonna be discussed may meet another checklist for a closed session meeting, but that should probably be discussed in a closed session, just to clarify before I make any statements about what specifically is gonna be discussed.
So, under 7 right now, and then...
Right.
Okay.
Right.
That being the case, um, I'd like to entertain a motion to enter into closed session.
So moved.
So moved.
Uh, and the second?
Second.
So we have, uh, Mr. Boda paid the motion. Ms. Jackson is the second. All those in favor of entering into closed session, please signify by saying aye.
I'm sorry, just got, just a discussion about...
Sorry. Sure, we can...
I, I just, is there a fiscal matter before us? Is there a personnel matter that is under our purview in the, uh, in the, in the city's employment handbook? Uh, I know that the curator is a con, is a, uh, a contract employee, I want to make sure I was right, a contract employee, so I don't know whether or not that falls underneath. Are we, I, I will put it to you this way, with all due respect for the people that are here, someone contacts some office and says, "We want to talk to you," doesn't automatically mean that we go into closed session, because it has to fall under the purview of the legislative branch. Do I want to talk to these people? I, I, I don't know, but I don't know whether or not it's something I should be doing without, in, without, in the public sphere.
Okay. And I, I'm gonna rely on legal counsel. He said that based on the information that he has, fine. Should we get into closed session? And it isn't, I, I don't feel it's appropriate, then we'll, we'll exit closed session.
Then I shall yield to you and your expertise in that regard.
Okay. So we have a, uh, motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? So we have th, three in favor. Chair votes aye. Okay. We are now in closed session.